Okay, um, good afternoon. Tonight is the Monday, April 6th, a meeting of the school committee. Patty Hames, could you please call the vote?
This is Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Mr. Boncory.
Here.
Mr. Capabianco.
Here.
Mr. Matucci.
Yep.
Ms. Swope.
Here.
Ms. Powell.
Present.
Mr. Perrin.
Here. Okay, um, the meeting will be recorded and maybe televised live. Mr. Matucci, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the state of America.
America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, limited. Okay, uh, public comment. Uh, just so the people at home understand, uh, there is a public comment. You will be allowed to email in, uh, Superintendent Howard's email address of L. Howard, H.O.W.A.R.D. at Winthrop dot K one two dot M A dot U S. Anytime during the meeting, you'll be allowed to email in your public comment. Delegates in business, I believe we have none. So we'll go to the minutes of our nineteenth meeting. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes of March nineteenth, twenty twenty?
So moved.
Mr. Boncory has made a motion. Can I get a second by that?
Second.
Seconds by Ms. Powell. Any discussion? Patty, can we get a roll call vote for the record?
Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Staying.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin.
Okay, now we'll be moving on to our financial and business procedures. Can I get a motion on warrant SBW sixteen in the amount of one hundred ninety-five thousand, eight hundred forty-three dollars and ten cents?
Motion.
Just about two makes the motion. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Ms. Swope for a second. Any discussion? Having none? Patty, can I please have a roll call vote for the record?
Barry?
Yes.
Boncory? Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Yes.
Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna need, uh, a motion for payroll, payroll warrant number SPW two, two zero one dash sixteen in the amount of seven hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and twenty-one cents. Can I have a motion?
Yes.
Second, so moves.
Okay, Ms. Swope makes the motion. Mr. Capabianco seconds. Uh, any discussion? Patty, roll call, please.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Matucci?
Staying.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin.
Abstention. Uh, moving on to our next, uh, payroll warrant is SPW two zero one dash seventeen in the amount of seven hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Ms. Powell makes the motion. Do I have a second, please?
Seconds.
Mr. Capabianco seconds. Any discussion on the warrant? Patty, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Staying.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin.
Abstention. Okay, uh, moving on to the next item of business. Can I get a motion on a budget transfer in the amount of four thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars, excuse me, fourteen thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars?
Motion.
Uh, motion by Mr. Matucci. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Ms. Powell. Any discussion? Patty, roll call, please.
Ms. Barry?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin.
Yes. Okay, moving along to sub, uh, excuse me, uh, no buildings and grounds, uh, this evening. Uh, we're moving on now to subcommittee reports. I believe we have a subcommittee report from Mr. Matucci, uh, relative to the budget.
It's been a few weeks since we had a budget subcommittee meeting with all the stuff going on, but we, um, need to vote tonight to present to the town council a, uh, a budget, uh, figure. And, um, we have two that I, uh, emailed you guys last night. Um, I know you've seen them before. We've got over this, um, through input from the, uh, staff and the administrative. Um, we have, uh, a level service budget and a needs budget. The level service budget is twenty-two million, eight hundred thirty-three thousand, eight hundred six dollars. And the needs budget is twenty-three million, nine eighty-nine, oh eight three. The recommendation is, from the budget subcommittee, is to recommend, um, moving forward the needs budget to the town council for, um, hopefully their appropriation. So I would like to have a, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, um, present the needs budget to, uh, twenty-three, nine eight nine, oh eight three.
I'll second that.
Second by Jen Powell. Um, any discussion?
Yeah, Gus, is there any way, do you think that, given the situation, all of the, um, yeah, all of the things that, that we negotiated in terms of, I don't know, uh, the, all the, all the work that we did to negotiate, I don't know what you call it, that, the, um, the, the budgets that were, um,
Contracts?
I guess, I guess all the, all the things that we, that we did last year, is there, do you think there are any negotiations because of the situation that might change because of, of what we did last year or not? Do you think anybody is going to be more lenient about our, um, our contracts or not?
You mean because of the contracts we settled?
Yeah, or not.
You think because we set, is it, it, we have increased in our contracts that we're gonna get, just so, because that we're gonna get more money, you think? Is that what you're saying?
No, I, I was just asking, do you, do you think that anybody is going to be more, I, I don't know, be, be willing to negotiate those contracts differently? And I'm not talking about the teacher contracts. I'm really talking about other kind of contracts that we agreed on last year.
You mean, you mean like service contracts, like
Yeah, yeah.
copy machines, stuff like that?
Yeah.
You can try. We definitely try it to see, you know, does it make it try? I'm not sure if it'll change, but.
No, I'm, I'm not sure either, but I'm just.
And I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure how much that would change, um, the amount of money that we need to, to stay the way we are. I, I don't know if it's gonna be, if it's gonna be that much of a difference, but something we can definitely try to do. You know, we can have the administrators try to, to, uh, see if there is anybody willing to lower their
Yeah.
fees or whatever there are, but we can see, we can, we can see that.
I was just.
We, we know what the problems are right now.
I know. I was just thinking that maybe because of the situation, they might be willing to do that. I'm, I don't know. But I was just thinking that might.
We can give it a shot, but I'm sure that those people are in the same boat as far as, you know, financially, I'm sure they're all struggling. Uh, with people not being able to pay, uh, people, um, you know, uh, canceling contracts. I mean, right now, it's an extreme situation.
I know.
And again, and again, like I said in the, in the email, just, it's gonna be very difficult because of, uh, of what's going on. I, I mean, this is gonna just trickle down from federal, state to local. I mean, I, I know our local receipts, if you talk to, if you talk to the town manager, I'm sure he'll tell you, and the CFO, she'll say the same thing, that our local receipts are gonna get decimated with this, which means that there's not gonna be as much money there. Now, I don't know if the state goes into their rainy day fund. I don't know if the federal government helps out yet. But if they don't, it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a problem. It's gonna be a problem for us.
Yeah. So, how can we a little bit more about that, Gus? Do, do you think, um, what do you, what do you think in the end is gonna happen here? Do you have a feeling about this?
The only thing that I can say is based upon what I'm seeing right now, as far as with, with this economic, this negative economic effect. We have to, we have to really start thinking about what we're going to do. And we have contractual obligations to notify people by certain times if they're gonna be laid off. And it's something we have to think about. Obviously, we're gonna need, we're gonna need input and feedback from like, like Phil and the council and the town manager, CFO, um, letting us know what they're thinking. Because I'm sure that they're thinking, and they know, that they're, that our local receipts are gonna be down. And I'm sure that the money, you know, all your chap, all your money in the chapters are gonna be down, um, you know, in the state seventy, ninety, they're all gonna be down because they're not bringing the money in. So I'm not sure what their plan is as far as.
Right, you, Mr. Matucci, you, you're also looking at the fact that they're not gonna have a lot of taxes, when it comes to meal taxes and all the other taxes that were covered by the, uh.
That's exactly, that's exactly what I'm talking about, like local receipts.
That was, that was Brian Perrin talking?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, you're off camera. Just please.
So that's, that's pretty much what I, what I can tell you right now, from what I see. So it's gonna be, there's gonna be issues. There will definitely be issues.
Okay.
I'm not sure if Phil has anything to say.
I am not gonna vote on this. At this time, I'm gonna abstain because I'm gonna have to deal with it on the council as well. After we see what Austin's put together for the town, we compare it, and then we'll, I will be voting on it.
But I'm sure you're in agreement, Phil, that, you know, it looks bleak because of, um, you know, like Brian said, restaurants are closed down, businesses are shutting up. It just means tax was down.
Oh, absolutely. You lost a lot of, you know, sales stats, because nobody's going to stores. The state is gonna be hurting. We have to see what the federal government does, what it comes through with, and then we'll know.
Yep, very good.
Austin is planning to present his budget on the twenty-fourth. So hopefully, we vote this and get it to him, so he can do his whole budget for presentation on the twenty-fourth.
Absolutely.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, if I may, just, from the chair.
Go ahead.
I, I think it's important to note that what you're looking at, those school committees' charge right now is to be looking at the level service budget and the needs-based budget. And the school committee's role is to, uh, vote on which budget they, like us, pursue. Um, the two budgets are put together in a similar fashion. Uh, the need-based budget tells the story of what the public school, meaning teachers, custodial staff, um, secretarial staff, every, every boot on the ground in the public school has weighed in to what the needs are of the Winthrop Public Schools moving forward. And that budget is built, um, at a time, it was built prior to the first time that we're in and the crisis that we're in. But even in this crisis, we still have to reflect, um, what we believe as a school sys, system is a budget that meets the needs of all of our moving forward. The level service budget, and we provided that budget as well, so that the school committee could see that if we did not, or were not able to get any of the materials, supplies, additional curriculum, or people in positions that we feel strongly are needed, so that our school district is as competitive as the school district to the left and the right of us, the level service budget would be, um, the amount of money that would allow us to open the doors yet not accomplish many of, uh, the items that we have so carefully outlined and determined are necessary for our students to receive an equitable education. So the charge of the school committee this evening is to make a decision as to which, uh, budget do you want the town of Winthrop to be aware of, as what you support as a school committee in terms of the needs of the district. We're in a weird position, obviously, because, um, everybody's sort of on hold with everything, and we understand, uh, the impact, um, to the best of our ability, which is probably very low level. None of us have ever encountered anything like this. But understanding that what we know we need and what we believe that we will be able to receive may be two very different things. But our voice in presenting these budgets to the committee was really the voice of the students of the Winthrop Public Schools as to what they're entitled to. So I just wanna make sure folks don't think that in asking or voting to move forward a budget that is a level service budget, that that is, um, sending any type of a disrespectful message in, in, in terms of understanding where we are as a community. So the message of the level service budget is to reflect what Winthrop Public Schools believes we need for our students without thinking about where we're currently at. We'll have to think about that, uh, when the community is able and, and the town is able to give us, uh, fund the school district at whatever level we're able to do, given the fiscal state of the community at that time, will be very much understood by the school department. So I just wanted to make sure folks were clear on what they were actually voting on.
Okay, any further discussion?
Can I make a?
No, go on.
Go ahead.
I just, you know, as, as someone who's, I've looked at this budget and I've poured through it, and I, I, I think that it's really important for the town to see what the level services budget is and to know what that, that figure would be. And that's, again, as Lisa had said, just keeping us, um, even with no additional programs. It's important to understand what that is. And then I think with the needs budget, I have heard a lot of, um, concerns from parents about what they wanna see from our schools, and this needs budget is what it would take, and I think it's, personally, why I support, because I think it is important to understand what it would take to move our school forward. We can't really make, um, adequate decisions as a town without knowing that figure, even though it is quite a big jump, but we're also dealing with a situation where we have had under level funding for at least the last two years, probably the last, that before that as well. You know, we're digging ourselves into a hole that we need to get out of.
I, just one more issue. I, I think, I mean, I'm all for presenting a budget that we need. But my question is always gonna be, when we decide if we don't get that, where we're gonna make the cuts. I would like to have another meeting to talk about that with the superintendent. Thanks.
Yes.
I'm sorry, is there a motion on the table, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, there is. There's a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion? Okay, I blew the motion. Mr. Matucci was for the, um, the need budget.
Want to read that, want to read it again?
Please do.
The motion would be to, to recommend, uh, to push forward to the town council the needs budget, which is twenty-three million, nine hundred eighty-nine thousand, oh eighty-three.
Okay, does everyone understand what the, uh, motion and the second is on this? Does everyone understand the motion?
Yes.
Can I have a roll call vote, please, Ms. Hames?
Barry? Mr. Boncory?
I abstain.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay, the, uh, motion passes with one abstention. Mr. Boncory, moving on now to the superintendent's report. Ms. Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Perrin. Um, so I'm gonna bring you up to date. The last school committee we, meeting we had, I brought folks up to speed. It was the beginning of the three, a three-week closure that we had. Um, and I had brought folks up to speed on the learning opportunities and, um, how we were gathering information to post for our students to keep them engaged in learning during that short-term, uh, closure. Uh, following the governor's announcement that schools would remain closed and not reopen before May fourth, uh, we had been, uh, we were given additional guidance, uh, regarding school districts, uh, moving forward and, and remote learning plans that needed to be developed a little bit deeper than the one that we had originally developed for that short-term closure, which was, uh, just initially providing opportunities for our parents to have their students' access to stay engaged. Uh, through the initial weeks of that crisis, our, uh, educational community, um, teachers, uh, therapists, uh, and town departments as well, helped us prioritize, uh, the health and safety and well-being of our students and families and, and staff, um, to get us up and running. And at the same time, um, we began operating a very remote learning model. Um, some online work, uh, some paper pencil, uh, materials for our students and sort of building, and I think I said this to Jen earlier today, we were sort of flying a plane as we were building it, um, and, and that has been somewhat difficult. Um, with the extension of the closure, uh, we believe that our families and students, uh, in our community needed more in, um, understanding and some more support and structure, uh, given the fact that this closure is now going to go through May fourth. Um, potentially, um, a lot longer than that from what we are hearing, um, sort of day-to-day. No one has come out and said it's gonna be closed beyond May fourth. Um, but we were blindsided a little when the governor came on and did close it until April. So our plan and goal as a leadership team and a school community was to develop a more indefinite plan, that we were planning as if we weren't going to open again, hoping that we'll be wrong, um, but to have a more longer-term plan. So, uh, with that in, in mind and with the, uh, recommendations, new recommendations that have come out from the commissioner, um, we've moved and have broadened our initial remote learning plan for our students over the past, uh, two weeks. Um, obviously, remote learning is a place students experience in the school, or in the classroom, with their teachers in front of them and their administrative, uh, staff members supporting them and their support staff working with them. Everyone that I have spoken to within the last three weeks, teachers, persons, paraprofessionals, adjustment counselors, principals, assistant principals, nobody wants to be home. Everybody wants to be back in front of their students. I'm hearing from parents that students are all set with room. Uh, they miss their peers, they miss, uh, friendships, uh, they miss getting in trouble a little bit in school, because that's always fun, um, and they certainly miss the structure. Uh, and this, uh, longer-term closure has left everybody uneasy, uh, given the fact not only have the adult, the students not gone through something like this in the past, but, um, the vast majority of, of the adults that are involved in this have never seen anything like this. So it is uncharted waters for all of us. So developing this longer-standing plan, um, in the event that school continues to stay closed past May, uh, we hope it will be beneficial to everybody. It is gonna look different than the plan parents have seen over the past few weeks. I can tell you that our school principals and assistant principals have been very forthcoming with parents through the website, through emails, um, and through phone calls to families and students. It definitely looks different pre-k to, than it does at the high school, uh, and vice versa. Um, there will be specific recommendations in this, uh, new, more, um, structured, laid-out plan, uh, that will help support our students with disabilities, our English language learners. And the high school program will certainly look a little bit different than the middle school, uh, and then, uh, the elementary schools. We work very closely with, uh, the union, because our teachers are working from home and, uh, it, within one or two weeks, we begin to realize that there are things that we need to lay out, expectations that need to be clear. Uh, uh, it, very similar to students in that structure is very helpful, um, but important making sure uh, that we are being equitable across all boards for our students, irregardless of what grade they're in. The gut, the commissioner has laid out some recommendations for school districts around, um, grading. So initially, um, we were advised and guided not to grade any of the work that students were given and not to provide students with any new learning, but enhance the learning and the standards that these, uh, students had already, um, exposed to. That's staying pretty much the same, with the exception, there's been a little bit of flexibility with, uh, middle school and high school in terms of, um, grading. If you think about the age level and the response, uh, of students in terms of their willingness to engage, initially, it was fine when, when we told kids that they weren't going to, uh, get credit for that. But the longer schools closed, the less likely we are, uh, will be able to get students to do much work if they're continuing, want to, uh, be given any credit or, um, it's not gonna be weight-bearing towards, uh, the end of the school year for them. So the commissioner has realized that and has flexed that requirement or guidance a little bit and is allowing schools to give, uh, either a pass fail or use a credit, no credit for our middle school and high school students. That is a local decision, uh, as his recommendation is a local decision whether schools do that for middle school and high school or whether they continue to say, this is the school work, uh, you're not gonna get credit for it, but it's up and ready for you. With that information, our principals have worked very closely with our union, with the teachers, who are the folks that are providing the work, and we came to the conclusion that, um, the bodies and extra recess doesn't work at middle school anymore and that the students, um, really do need something, uh, to, to give them some credit and keep them engaged, uh, at a level that we can hold them accountable for. So those are some of the things that we'll be coming out, a very clearly articulated, uh, plan for parents to understand and for teachers to understand, as well as the committee and other, uh, members of the community. Our principals and administrative team have worked hard with the teachers over the past, uh, seven days straight. Um, I can vouch for the weekend, uh, that our principals have been working and editing a document that is gonna be, um, something that's acceptable for all and is going to allow our students to continue with other school systems in the state of Massachusetts. Um, from a technology standpoint, I've had quite a few questions, um, from people. Not a one-to-one school district, what does that mean? That means not every child in the Winthrop Public Schools has access during the school day to their own personal computers. At the high school, each student has a computer that they're allowed to take home a Chromebook. At the middle school, there are computer carts, that each classroom has a, uh, set of comput, of Chromebooks in their classroom. Um, the majority of them are working, so each class, uh, a middle school student goes in too. Uh, sometimes they have to share them, um, but many days they have to have at least one to every two students. And then in pre-k through five, um, Chromebooks are, we have about a hundred Chromebooks in each, working Chromebooks in each building. Those Chromebooks are on carts and shared between classrooms. Um, so with that roll, we, um, we deliver Chromebooks to every public school for the simple reason we don't have nineteen hundred Chromebooks to give to every student. And so we've put various, um, activities up for our students and, and the commissioner was very clear that, um, nobody is recommending that a student sit in front of a device for six hours a day at home. Um, and at the pre-k to five level, they don't use a device that often during the school day anyway. Um, but any parent or student who has had any issue with accessing technology, whether it be internet service in their home or access to a computer to do some of the schoolwork, if not quite a bit of it, those folks have met with the principal of each building or assistant principal. Um, and in all, you know, due respect, we'd like that to stay confidential. And, but if you are someone who's struggling with access to a, a, a device or a ability to get work done without a computer, um, please contact your principal in a confidential manner, uh, so that families, uh, needs are not. so that families' needs are not exposed and so that they feel comfortable having that access. So this week, I anticipate by, hopefully by tomorrow, if not Wednesday, we will have an updated remote learning plan as well as an MOU, a memorandum of understanding with the school, I'm sorry, with the teachers' union that will be supportive of the learning plan. And once that is accomplished and it's pretty detailed, we will be able by grade level to send that to each parent so that they know, here is the next step because we know we're going to be out longer. And if in fact, we do not come back this school year, here is the plan that we plan to take in terms of our child's access to learning between now and the end of the school year. Hopefully, we return and don't need to use it after May 4th, but that's not a guarantee. So we have chosen to plan for the worse. And I have to say that once this is completely written, it will be adjusted based on our student needs, of course, between now and the end of the school year. But it is a document that will be able to be used again in the future. We hope we'll have to use it, but the work involved in putting it together, I will be happy not to have to do that again. So that's an update on the, and I can take some questions. I just want to give you two or three more little thing, updates on things that we're doing. The school lunch program, we continuously run our school lunch program. And you know, the state and the federal government are also building the plane as they fly it. And we chose to continue to run the school lunch program regardless of the funding because we knew we had students who would not otherwise have food. The state and federal government have caught up with the fact that that's a necessity in many districts. So they have identified the funding that will now be reimbursed to the school to a degree and we've closed track on that. We'll continue to run that lunch program. I have a meeting tomorrow. I would like to be able to serve lunches during April vacation because kids don't eat, even though things are changing. And two more small items, the buildings with the help of the town. The town council has graciously, through some funding from the state, agreed to sanitize our school buildings. We initially were going to have them sanitized this week. We chose to put that off till the end of April and with the help of Steve Galla, Rich Safuni, and Mikhail Felipko, we have made arrangements to push that out to the end of April. So we're closer to an opening. Will be cleaned right before students are to return on May 4th. So hopefully, we will be returning on that date and when we do, we'll have up-to-date sanitization. Our custodians have the buildings in an amazing way and this is another level of sort of support to make sure that we're all feeling comfortable when we do return. And the last thing is, as we get closer to May, for those of you who have seniors, senior students, we are very mindful of the impact of the senior students that are seniors at the school to take away their entitlement to all the senior silliness and activities and accomplishments and celebrations is very sad. And Mr. Krabi and I have been in close communication with the senior class and will continue that conversation with the senior class and other classes that may be losing activities traditional to them. And we will work closely with them to try not to lose anything and to try to push dates out and, you know, make sure that we give every opportunity to keep anything in for our students. If May is the month from May 4th, I believe, through the 23rd, there's lots of senior activities. So as we get closer to knowing if we're coming back, we'll have those discussions with our students and I will keep the committee up to date. So I think it's important to know that we have met with the students. Mr. Krabi and I, with the senior class president, to help her figure out how to get the message out that we do care. This is not a just, oh, there's no school, so too bad you guys lost everything. We are very mindful that this is an important step in the life of our students and we want to make sure we preserve anything that we can for them. And that was my long-winded superintendent report.
Mr. Chairman, if you recognize.
Hold on, through the chair, please, so that we can keep a little order.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So here's my question to through the chair and through Superintendent Howard. I received a few emails from teachers. I don't know why I'm getting these, but off the record, sort of asking what the expectation is for them or April vacation. And in my thoughts, is it smart for us just to take a vote to cancel it even though the kind of, the governor did that anyway, so they know that it's sort of a regular school week this year that they could still give more schoolwork to their students?
Well, I can tell you about the discussion. This is superintendent, now that I fixed my video. I have had discussion in two ways about April vacation. That thought and the question about April vacation is one of every school in the Commonwealth. And so I've been able to watch the listserv of superintendents and what folks are doing and what other school committees in different communities have to do. And it's about a 50-50 split. So right now, school with five snow days. So we're due to get out, I believe it's June 23rd, Patty will correct me if I'm wrong. And that is the last day that we can keep students in front of us and teachers in front of us. By teacher contract, teachers work 183 days to go to school 80. So teachers are paid for 183 days from the day school opens until the last day of school closes. And that's with 185 days, school days because of snow days you can build in. In talking about the difference between working through April vacation and getting, if we did that, we would get out on June 17th. Because again, you can, teachers can, we're paying teachers for 183 days. So if we keep them in school during April vacation and we keep them in school till the 23rd, there would be four days, additional days that you would have to pay staff. And students would actually get out on the 17th because students contractually, not contractually, legally, only need to do 180 days. And the commissioner has lifted the extension ban, so students are only held to go to school through these snow days.
Will the commissioner raise it to June 30th, I believe?
The commissioner did not raise it till June 30th. He said that the 185 days, he didn't give, June 30th is teacher contract. So the majority of teachers' contracts won't allow teachers to work past June 30th. I've heard nothing, the only thing I've heard from the commissioner, I've seen from the commissioner is that they lifted the ban on the total number of days so that the students only have to go up until the 185th day. That's the only thing that I've heard, but I can, I can check that. But just for the theory and understanding, if we were, the teachers here have decided that they're going to post lessons during April vacation, if April vacation were to stay as a non-teaching day, so that students would have access and be able to continue and lessons, lessons would be posted. If teachers work, and the thought from our teachers and some other folks have been that if we go back to school and we're not expected through June, that having the kids at the end of the school year in front of us for four additional days means that we have them for six hours of direct teaching and learning. If we go to school and teachers are expected to be here during April vacation, we would have to cut it back to June 17th, meaning those four days that the students have to be here would be four days that they would be doing remote learning instead of direct teaching. And so there's kind of 50-50, you know, as to, as to what the impact, I would say. And then the other theory is that kids are just starting to get into the groove of going back to school. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that I understand that. However, the teachers have never stopped teaching and never stopped planning for instruction. And the thought that they're continuing to go and go and go, and they will go through April vacation to teach if that is the committee's, you know, recommendation. However, you have to understand the impact. They'll, everybody will be getting out on June 17th. And if we get lifted and we're back in school, we could have had those students in front of us until June 23rd, I believe, is the date. So I just want to make sure.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just my conversation with school committee members throughout the state, most of the ones that I trust have canceled it because there is the belief that the commissioner could move the date back. It hasn't happened yet, but those involved believe it's a strong possibility. So personally, I would be in favor of formally canceling April vacation.
What would be the, I just would like to know what would be the benefit of, what folks think the benefit of canceling the vacation would be? That's where, that's where some of our staff is struggling with the benefit of continuing through April vacation and getting out of school earlier would be to students.
Well, my, I think there's the belief out there that the commissioner is going to move the end date. We've already saw that with the MIA AA tournament and I just have a feeling that's something that could happen. And, you know, I think just right now, given any sort of breaks for our students, just doesn't, doesn't make sense to me.
But please understand if they move the end date and we ask our teachers, we tell our teachers and our students that they have to stay, you have to pay the teachers to stay and that money is not in the current budget. You have money in the budget to pay for 183 days. So there's a fiscal impact on that that I just want to make sure people understand. And I can clarify that if people don't get that.
Lisa, through the chairman, myself, there's still going to be work that is posted and continue on. And we're talking about four days because we can't cancel the holiday by contract. So we're talking about four days, we're talking about four days here and work will still be posted. So there will still be the opportunity to get that information and that teaching packet and work through that week. Is that correct, prior to that week?
That's correct. That was discussed with the union and part of the MOA that is almost done.
Through the chair, I have a question. So Ms. Howard, if the students, if the teachers are still posting, what would the expectations be on the middle schoolers and high schoolers in terms of turning in work during that, it would be available to them, but would they be accountable for that since we are now able to hold them accountable for some of their work?
I, I do know that the teachers, the expectations of the teachers were laid out in some of the work we did today around the MOU and the teachers would not be during those four days instructing or answering emails. However, they would pick up right away when they turned on them. We did not finish the discussion about the accountability of the work actually posted counting when we say for credit. And again, that is not relevant at the elementary level at all. But certainly, we have students that have some catch-up, still have some catch-up work to do from the time we closed on the 13th. So students can still turn in work that was due for the third quarter that they hadn't completed. They still have time to handle any of that work in, you know, so that could affect their grade for third quarter. So giving kids all that extra sort of makeup time. So that could be a timeframe where they worked on that. You know, more importantly, we discussed the posting of those lessons. We did not get to whether or not these kids would receive credit and I certainly can get some clarification on that, but it was not discussed today for kids at middle and high school.
Ms. Howard, what would your recommendation be based upon what you've discussed with your leadership team and the ability for work to be posted online? What would your recommendation be?
Based on what I saw today from Revere, Lynn, Saugus, Linfield, Melrose, there'll be a whole list that will be coming out by Thursday. All of those schools have kept April vacation as closed and still delivering school lunch. They are optimistic that, you know, the ban is going to be lifted and we'll have students in front of us. And they share the same concern about the fiscal restraint. If the commissioner lifts the ability to go beyond 185 days, that would be great, but school systems don't have the capacity in their current budgets to fund that. So if the teachers are here during April vacation, those count as days towards their 183. So if they stayed beyond June 17th, you would have to find a source to pay them, to have them continue to instruct our students to the end of June if that was what the committee was looking for. So I personally, I can tell you that I have a lot of exhausted people in front of me. Not exhausted from the preparation and the work they've been doing, also exhausted from the crisis that we're in and for the other half of their life, which is dealing with their families. Don't forget, although they are teaching and they're doing it from home, they also have kids that are supposed to be in school somewhere else that are trying to keep occupied and have them do their distance learning plans. And I am concerned about, you know, the CDC's forecast of the next weeks. And as of last, we're not to wear masks when we went outside and today we do. So, you know, I would say stick with the calendar. I'm not a fan of continuing, continuing to change things when we're in complete craziness. To add something else to people's plates, I think would be difficult, but it's not a decision that I get to make, I just get to guide you guys.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Ms. Howard. We, I did talk with Lisa earlier today, particularly about the elementary school kids. And I understand that we don't have, it's not as clear on the elementary school level about what is, the responsibility is for the teachers in terms of the plan. But I would, I did actually call the commissioner today and ask that he really think about what we could do on the elementary school level, to think about how we could better provide online learning overall and perhaps be more responsive to those kids. It's not as if they should stay on the computers six hours a day, but to think about how we could better plan for this because this may not be our last. This may be, you know, maybe it will be just until March, May 4th, but perhaps it will be longer and perhaps it will be another day that we have to face this. So I would encourage the commissioner and hopefully the superintendents to prevail on this and hopefully provide a better plan as we go forward to think about alternative opportunities. And finally, I just want to say, I'm just so sad that so many parents are facing this kind of illness. I just, I think on behalf of all of us, we want to say, stay safe and stay well.
Thank you, Ms. Hope. I think that's very important. Parents are going to be going through a lot in the next few weeks as the virus does peak. And no one wants to see students learning remotely and nothing's going to be replaced in classroom time. But I, I think we have to look at what's in the budget and also the fact that they're going to have work available to them. I mean, there can be an answer that's given by Lisa Howard as far as whether or not that work will count in the middle and high school. But I, I think it's important that we look at what the budget is and also the fact that there is work available and we're talking about a four-day period, which I really would rather see in classroom learning if that's the case, if we have the opportunity for that.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Matucci.
So I do understand what Tino is saying, I, you know, I understand the concern. However, I believe and have the utmost confidence in our staff and administrators, our teachers, especially our teachers, to teach. I know that, I don't think that anyone's going to be going on any cruises or Hawaiian vacations during that week.
Flights to Miami are 18 bucks, so. A joke, sorry.
I didn't hear what you said.
I said flights to Miami are only 18 bucks.
I know, I know, yeah, good, thank you.
And there's a reason for that, too.
But anyways, I just think that, like I say, I trust that our teachers will teach our kids however way. however way they have to, whether it be remotely or in the classroom. So I do understand the concern and obviously the budget piece of that, if it did come to that, would be a problem. So I think we're good.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion? I, I'd like to make a motion that it remains as it is.
Mr. Chairman, point of information, I don't think we need to vote on it since there are, the vote would be to cancel it. And after your discussion, I'm not prepared to make that motion. I just thought it should be talked about.
Thank you, Mr. Capabianco. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'm going to move on to personnel matters. Ms. Howard, do you have any appointments, resignations, retirements, postings, or leaves of absence?
Yes, I have one retirement. Kathy Costonas, here at Arthur T. Cummings School, has submitted her retirement. I'd like to speak a little bit more in depth about her at our next meeting. But she is asking for, to approve her sick leave as part of the contract.
Can I get a motion for Ms. Costonas to buy back her sick leave?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Matucci, who ran a second from?
Jennifer Powell.
A second from Jennifer Powell. Any discussion? Ms. Haynes, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swob?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes. Okay, moving on to new business. We have the, an item on the agenda tonight for hourly employees payment during school closure. Ms. Howard, would you like to bring us through that? And can you reference, if you could, the letter recommending it from the D E S C, excuse me, D E S E, from the Commissioner Jeffrey Riley? That's in our packet.
Yes, thank you. So at the beginning of the school closure, both the governor and the commissioner on separate venues had addressed the terms of the closure being temporary and for, and I'll speak only to the schools and not to the other groups that were referenced by the governor. But hourly employees and in our, I believe we had the conversation at the last school committee meeting that anybody that was a payroll employee, we were going to continue to pay those folks. And the hourly employees are people like house monitored, our school lunch staff, not, not short-term subs that are called in as needed, but long-term subs who had been hired for a leave of absence and are continuing to work. Say on someone who was on maternity leave, those folks that were, have that maternity leave are still employed by us and still doing the work. And the commissioner had sent out on his desktop that March 20th letter that I referenced in which he states, in response to questions, just so the public can hear it, in response to questions I have received from school superintendents, I am strongly recommending that school districts pay their hourly employees during the current emergency school closure. Like all of us, these employees need to follow public health directives and take care of their family. While they do so, school districts could ask them to continue their learning by reading educational articles, books, taking online classes and performing other tasks that could be a benefit to the school district. For the benefit of the students we serve, I believe it would be important for schools to maintain continuity of operations during the period of school closures. Districts must be able to quickly resume providing services to students as soon as schools reopen. In order for school districts to accomplish that, they will need to have available, ready workforce, including hourly employees. School districts have already budgeted these costs. And I urge the superintendents to coordinate your efforts on this issue with your municipal officials, human resource officers and school business managers. I expect to be able to provide recommendations regarding payment to contractors in the near future. Thank you for all that you are doing to manage and lead during the state of emergency. Sincerely, Commissioner Jeffrey C. Riley. So I can bring you up to speed on our hourly employees that we're continuing to pay. We have launched as part of our learning opportunity continuation of that. That many of our hourly employees will be provided access to, it's called Education K to 12. And it's a learning platform where we can provide professional development for staff. And it's a host of a variety of professional development things from confidentiality practice to school bus driving training, to all kinds, almost anything you could think of depending upon the position that someone is in. So as part of our distance learning plan for those folks that are continuing to work, we have built that platform and we'll be rolling that out to them this week. And that was a full cost to the school district because of the relationship we have with this online professional development group that wants to have future engagement in the school system. The other step in this process is at the higher level of transportation companies that provided transportation for students, both regular ed and special ed students. We are working closely with MasBol, which is the Association of School Business Offices and of revenue regarding their guidance almost having to continue to pay contracted bus service companies that we have so that they can continue to pay their employees. As of right now, we don't have any regular bus service with the exception of our one in-town hourly paid bus driver. And we are continuing to pay him. So this conversation that we have had at the superintendent's level with the commissioner was around have schools voted on this. And again, it's that 50 50 split because nobody's ever done this before. Some folks have taken a vote on it and others have not. And I wanted to put that before you for your question and thought whether or not you can vote to continue to pay these employees while school is out. And all their, all their costs are in the current budget. So would be no further impact on the budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue to pay our hourly employees.
Do I have a second? Mr. Boncory, seconds. Any further discussion?
Could I ask how much money it is?
Good, but I wouldn't be able to tell you. I'd have to apologize. I'd have to look at every employee that was an hourly rate employee.
An estimate, Lisa, just an estimate.
Yeah, so often, Susan, I don't know if you want to weigh in, but I would imagine that it's under $20,000.
Yeah, it's, it's hourly employees. It's not like they're making a ton of money as it is, so. But like Lisa said, it is in the budget. It's already been budgeted for.
Yeah, I just wanted to know how much what was. So it's about $20,000 or under, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'd ask Patty if you could please call the roll.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Mr. Capabianco?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Swob?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Abstention. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. I'm assuming we're not going to do anything with the textbook material discount request?
That's correct. And I do have one public comment when you get to it.
Okay, public comment. Lisa, go ahead.
So I've had my, my email up throughout the meeting. So I had no public comments prior to the meeting. And I have received one since the meeting began and I will read that public comment. And I will not name the person, but it is a parent of, who has two students within our school. And I recognize whom it is. So because, and here is the comment quoted. Because I have two kids in different schools, there are two websites that I have to check for my kids' work. Although both school websites look the same, they are managed differently in that each one puts it on their webpage in a different place. Very confusing as a parent to try to teach. It is, is it possible to change all the schools' websites to have the kids' recommended work in large bold letters directly at the top of each school webpage to make it much easier? And although there won't be discussion on the public comment, I will say that I will forward that comment to all four principals because if it is a comment from one person, I would imagine it may be a comment from others. So we will certainly pay attention to that comment. And thank you to the, to the parent who sent it forth.
Okay, any further public comment, Lisa? Can we move on?
I see none.
Okay, moving on to public relations. Does anyone have any public relations they'd like to discuss? Hearing none, we're going to move on to our executive session portion of the meeting. The chair anticipates going into the executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of a public body, and the chair so declares. We'll be adjourning from our executive session.